I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Monday, April 15th Board of Alderman Meeting. The first order of business today is to open up nominations for Chair to serve over tonight's meeting. Alderman Barbara Gallo.
I nominate Alma Taddeo.
Second.
And I move to close the nominations.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All those in favor of Alderwoman Taddeo to be Chair for this evening's meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
And I moved... Oops, sorry. And I moved to close the nominations, or did I miss that part already?
No, you did.
Okay, perfect.
You did. We kind of wait two motions at once.
Perfect.
Do you need a paper copy, or are you good?
No, I have a...
Okay.
Should be like scoot in.
I can actually see you tonight.
I did.
So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 15th Board of Alderman Meeting. The first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, as members of the public have an opportunity to comment. Would anybody from the public like to comment? And if you would, please come up, state your name, town of residence, and then you may proceed from the podium.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, we have communications from the mayor.
Hello. So, the first item the mayor has requested that you remove from the board, the table nomination of Susan Star Adams for the Planning Commission, and circulate the ballot box.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion. All those in favor, to untable the mayoral nomination for Susan Star Adams for the Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Would you like to come up and say a few words? That's up to you.
Do we have to vote?
Oh.
(laughing).
So, we need a motion to circulate the ballot.
Uh, motion to circulate the ballot box? Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor of circulating the ballot box?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
I just assumed things are gonna go well for you, so, sorry.
(laughing).
So, the second item that the mayor has asked me to bring up is the RFP for Rutland 2050, which is in your packet. The mayor's office, in collaboration with the RRA, has finalized the draft request for proposals for Rutland's vision document, Rutland 2050, which is included in your packet. This vision document, once completed, will outline the city's desired look, feel, and operations over the next 25 years. Rutland 2050 will serve as a guiding framework for future municipal plans spanning three eight-year terms, as well as a prospectus for developers and corporations interested in our city's long-term growth trajectory. The document will incorporate insights from studies conducted over the past decade, including feedback from the Planning Commission, Board of Aldermen, the mayor's office, and Rutland City residents. To progress with this document, we need to evaluate the costs and capabilities of available consultants for the project. Therefore, the mayor is requesting the board's permission for the mayor's office to issue the RFP for creating this document. Once we receive RFP responses, the mayor's office will assess proposals in partnership with the RRA and then return to the board to discuss funding and awarding the RFP. There will be no immediate costs incurred by issuing the RFP. If the board wishes to proceed promptly, the mayor has given me a motion to seek approval for issuing the RFP tonight. Alternatively, if the board prefers further discussion, we have a motion for referring this matter to committee.
So, if I may, I know we don't have a motion on the floor. I think I would prefer that we have some discussion over this. We do have a master plan. We have a master plan in place that was received with community input. I know the Regional Planning Commission will do an updated 25-year plan that Rutland City would also be included in. I just question the need for an additional plan. So, I'd like to refer that to committee. I'm assuming Community and Economic Development?
You wrote charter and ordinance, but I think Community and Economic Development would be perfectly suitable.
I think... I so moved to Community and Economic Development.
Second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. All those in favor of referring the RFP to Community and Economic Development, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Um, next up, we have additions and deletions to the agenda, and I would like to move the special event permits for the farmers market and for the VFW Loyalty Day Parade up to the beginning. If there are no objections, thank you very much. Um, okay. So, is anybody here to speak about the farmers market?
I think we need a second, right?
Do we need a motion to approve the change in the agenda?
Yes.
My name is Mort Brown.
Oh, sorry, one moment, sir, I'm sorry. Stay right there, we'll get to you, one moment. Um, all those in favor of updating the agenda and moving the special event permit?
Did we get a second? I don't know if we got a second yet.
Oh, second.
To the beginning, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Um, so now, go ahead, sir, thank you.
My name's Mort Brown, I'm here as a representative for Farmer's Market, and we're requesting permit to operate in Depot Park for the summer farmers market, uh, starting May 11th and going through October 23rd on Saturdays. And on Wednesdays, it would be from June 7th through the 23rd of October. We're real happy with our location, and we're hoping that we can continue working with the City of Rutland to bring in as many tourists and as many people as possible to our areas on Saturday and Wednesday. We certainly appreciate the opportunity, over these long years, to have operated in conjunction with this governing body of the city, and we are looking forward to continuing that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll move to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I will move...
Madam Chair, just a quick question, is there still a fee associated with this permit for these folks?
I believe it's $500.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. I see no insurance listed, they don't need insurance?
Yeah, they do.
They were approved... They were approved by the attorney.
What's going here, Joe, it says on the second floor?
Yeah, it's on the second, okay, my mistake.
Actually, this is loyalty to pay. You are correct, there was no insurance, what's going on there?
Okay, back to you.
Okay, we all set? Okay. Um, so I will move for the approval of the farmers market to begin May 11th and end, the date here, sir, is October 26th. And then also on Wednesdays, beginning June 5th through October 23rd.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the farmers market special event permit, it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Question?
Question.
Actually, a comment. We, uh, I think we also need to put this committee and start doing some research. Um, it does cost us about $400 or $500 a week for Public Works overtime, to set that all up. I don't believe $500 covers the whole summer. This is $450 per week on Saturday. We don't need to do it on Wednesday because it's a smaller farmers market. But we do, it does cost the city some money to close the streets up and set that up. Also, we need to start talking about parking. The farmers market takes a lot of the plaza parking, and that's been a big issue here this last year. We need to sit down and talk about that and set up designated areas for the, um, folks who are in the farmers market, and then a place for customers to park without using the Walmart parking lot, because it's becoming a real problem. Um, those operators in the plaza pay big taxes to have that privilege for that parking, and it should not be used just for the farmers market. So, I think I'd like to put that in committee after we do a vote on that. So, if we issue a committee, we'll talk about it for next year.
And if I can, Madam Chair, I'd also like to include in my motion that we maintain the fee at $500 this year.
Secondor agrees.
Thank you very much. Okay. All those in favor of approving the special event permit for the farmers market, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to put in the Committee of Community Development to talk about the farmers market for next year and how we're gonna cover these costs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to put into the Community and Economic Development costs associated with the farmers market. All those in favor? Oh, yes, Alderman McClure.
Uh, my question for the maker of the motion, Alderman Gillum, do you feel it may be more appropriate to put this in Public Works, since this is a matter of, at the end of the day, as it boils down to the payment for the Public Works Department? Or do you feel Community and Economic Development would be the most appropriate place?
I think it should go into Finance, because we're dealing with revenue, so maybe we should put it in Finance. I'd like to change my motion to put it in Finance.
Secondor agrees.
So, secondor agree?
Sure.
We have a motion to refer to the Finance Committee fees associated with the farmers market and costs to the DPW. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next, for the special event permits, we have the VFW Loyalty Day Parade. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this?
Our two chairs are right here.
All right. My only question is, on the bottom of this letter I received, the email, it says that we have to clean up right after the event, which we always do. But it says, um, we also have to be... Agrees to pay all costs incurred, including any overtime or payroll expenses. Now, we never have done that, which is similar to what you would do with the farmers market. You pick up anything that's blocking the road so that we can have this event. I just wanted to make sure that we're not gonna be charged for this. I mean, we've done this for years, it's 60 years.
It's like the Halloween parade.
I mean, I just wanted to make sure, because it says it on here that we will be charged for expenses, for overtime.
Uh, can we ask where they got that from?
Uh, yeah, where, where does it say that? On the special event permit?
Yeah, it says city.
Basically.
Right on the very bottom of the...
That's what responds to the, when they file it electronically.
A GovPilot thing, maybe?
Is it from GovPilot?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. But it's in the fine print of the...
Yes. This is...
Say can or will?
Uh, say, say what? What'd you say?
Does it say can be charged or will be charged?
By signing, read all conditions, conditionally agrees to arrange for cleanup, as well as agrees to pay. No, it doesn't say that. I didn't know, I had no idea that this even printed out like this to you. Um, but that is not something that we, that we do.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure of, because this is for the men and women that serve this.
Correct. Do you mind if I keep a copy? Can I keep this, so I can show our programmer about this? Okay, thank you.
So, I'll move to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded.
I'm gonna have to abstain, because I'm on the committee with the ladies, so I will not be voting in it, but I am supporting it.
Duly noted.
That won't be able to happen, Billy. There's only six of us here tonight.
If I may, I understand that you are on the committee, but you really have no conflict, and if you don't vote, then we can't approve the permit.
Oh, okay.
Because there's only six of us on the floor.
That's right, we got a gap here. Sorry. But everybody knows that I'm on the committee, so, you know, conflict, okay.
So, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just wanna make a comment before we vote. Um, I put our, I put my money where my mouth is. Um, in the email that we sent back to all the marchers and the people participating in the parade, we're putting a big piece in there not to park in the shopping plaza, to park behind the plaza or on the north end of the plaza. So, we're cooperating with the business people not to use up their business spaces for the parade. So, hopefully, people who come to the parade do the same thing. But people who are participating in the parade have been told where to park, so...
Okay. So, we have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I will move for the approval of the Loyalty Day Parade to be held on May 5th, starting at noon. And I will state that no cost or overtime will be incurred by this, um, event.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Loyalty Day Parade permit, it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next, I would like to report back, um, about, uh, we officially have a new Planning Commission member, welcome Susan Star Adams, you were unanimously voted in, if you would like to... Yes. If you would like to come say a few words, we would love to hear from you.
I just want to say thank you for the recommendation. And, um, as a Realtor and Rutland business owner and resident, I believe that'll be, hopefully, will be helpful to the Planning Commission. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up are reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Barbara Spalding with a referral of innovative district placemaking plan. That's page one of your packet.
Good evening. So, about a year ago, um, the city received a grant through the Center of Rural Innovation, and the funds were used to create a placemaking plan for downtown Rutland. Several stakeholders are in this room that participated in the planning process, and the final draft was presented to the RRA Board last Tuesday, and the referral is for you all to see the same presentation before it is made public. And, um, so the referral is to send it to committee. Thank you.
I'll move to refer to Community and Economic Development.
Second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have Treasurer Markowski with the Treasurer's Report, quarter ending March 31st, to be emailed.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I emailed the quarter-end results to everyone. Um, I'll be brief tonight, because, uh, the quarter-end report includes all of the funds that we have for the city. Normally, it's just the general fund, water and sewer funds that we're looking at at the end of the month. But the quarter-end is a lengthy report, and we, uh, I will ask to refer that to committee. But, um, I just wanna highlight a couple of things in there. Um, uh, cash balance is still high with this city funds. You see the changes when we have collections and when we pay the school. Um, but for end of the period, pretty close to what we saw last year when I was doing the report for this time. Um, delinquent taxes, prior year delinquent taxes, $806,000. Um, I'd like to say that's good, we're working it down. We had some tax sales in April, so we'll see that balance go down from that. Um, and also, water and sewer delinquent balance, 342,000. And, um, and I did mention last time, but I wanna mention again, because I, those shut-offs were, were starting to meet with DPW compiling a list. So, um, in my office, I know Linda reaches out to anyone right now, starting now, and she's already been reaching out to, to folks to let them know that, you know, this is a process that we do, and try to get them in a payment agreement and get them paid before we end up with a shut-off. So, you know, we talk about tax sales, we talk about shut-offs, and just remember, that's a last resort. We're not wanting to do that, but that really is the last resort in the collections from my office. Um, I would point out the balance sheets, um, so you have all of the funds there. Um, and, um, I think I have a little mistake on there, uh, when I'm reading my memo, we do not have $1.2 million that we carried over for the tax rate. We have $497,000, so I'd like to correct that right now for the record when I see it. Um, I was looking at last year, and I left that in there, so, um... People will ask already, what do you think of the tax rate? Third quarter is starting to show that we're, we're, uh, non-tax revenue is strong, 100% of what we projected, so that's very good, because we're gonna need that. Expenses are right on target at 75%. If we were to close the books now, we're 75%. What we said we had budgeted, we've spent 75% of that. Um, um, uh, water and sewer funds, um, I worry about those funds when I look at the revenue. Their, the revenue does not support, we're not seeing the revenue that we anticipate there. So, I will say, I really went through those numbers closely over the weekend, um, and wanna start meeting with the commissioner and the business manager to look a little bit more closely at those funds, so, um, I'm doing that. Parking fund, revenue is at 58% of what's budgeted, and, um, expense is, uh, at 60%. So, remember, we're budgeting a shortfall in parking, so we're never gonna catch up with that. So, we'll see, once we have some time passed, we'll be able to really analyze that park mobile. I think that's a really good, um, source of revenue for the city, but we haven't had a tracking for that yet, so... Transit is performing a little bit better than it did last year at this time, so that's good. Um, and I always put the, um, quarter-end report on the city website, so if anybody is interested in looking and ask questions, please, um, come see me. And, um, so I would like to ask the board to refer this to, um, the Finance Committee for more review and any questions that you might have.
So, I'll move, second.
We have a motion, it has been seconded. Question from Alderman Heck.
Uh, Mary, if you don't mind, just a quick question. So, when we look at the property in the water sewer, we're talking about $1.15 million, $1,150,000. Is there a way to kinda go back? I know with COVID being around and stuff, times are a little different. I'm just trying to figure out if we can start to look at what impact the rising costs the state's gonna be handing down at whatever particular time, whatever the administration's doing here in regards to, you know, budget increases. I'm just trying to figure out if this is, um, this is like a normal number when you look at property and water and sewer delinquencies? Is this high, is this low? Just trying to get a perspective of where we're at and see if we can start tracking to see what may be coming ahead of us here.
Yes, and I always look, when I prepare these, where were we? Uh, we're, we're like $4,000 different than we were last year on property tax collection, which I really wish that was a better number, but, um... So, we're tracking about the same, but I do start to worry about, um, the increases in water and sewer and the coming increases in property taxes and, and collection next year. So, trying to, uh, catch up with taxpayers that are falling behind earlier in the process, maybe start some payment agreements now, um, with that coming. But I do look at that, and if you would like, I could do a little bit more, um, for the committee meeting.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thanks.
We have a motion to refer the Treasurer's Quarterly Report to the Finance Committee. It was seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Treasurer. Next up, we have reports of standing committees, and the first order of business is the Community and Economic Development Committee. Um, the topics were 10 Cleveland Avenue, Center Street redesign project, the market rate housing program. The committee met Thursday, April 4th, 2024. Committee members present were Chair Taddeo, Alderman McCann, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Whitcomb. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman Gillum, Treasurer Markowski, President Talbot, Mary Cohen, Ed Bove, and Melanie Paskovich. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. Ed Bove first presented from the RRA about 10 Cleveland Avenue. The city had a letter of intent to purchase the property, so the city could begin understanding the work that needs to be done to clean up the property from asbestos and other contaminants. The plan is to enroll the property into BRELLA, a program managed by the Agency of Natural Resources under the Department of Environmental Quality. BRELLA is the Brownfields' Reuse and Environmental Liability Limitation Program. The BRELLA program would provide insurance for the property and make money available for cleaning up the site. The city does not want to assume financial or legal liability until there is more information available, and signing an LOI gives the city time to gather the information to understand what steps need to be taken to manage the property. Uh, the VHP Consulting team can work on an application for BRELLA and for a municipal liability exemption for the property. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to give the mayor, on behalf of Rutland City, permission to extend and sign the letter of intent for 10 Cleveland Avenue for an additional six months. The motion passed four to zero.
And I will move that motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved, it has been seconded. All those in favor?
I just have a little debate, if I may. So, in, in the committee, if you were present, um, I, um, kind of addressed my concerns for not really knowing enough about this project, that, um, uh, we don't get the, the minutes of the meeting, um, we're not always up to speed on what's happening, where, what amount of money's been spent, what it's been spent on, things to this degree. And, and, and speaking with the, the chair and the mayor, I hope that moving forward, this board is much more informed. Uh, we have players from regional planning, players from the, um, uh, char, or, uh, the, um... See, thank you, I lost my train of thought. Um, yet, there's nobody from, nobody, I'm not saying, but this legislative body, we are the legislative body of the City of Rutland, and we need to be involved in the sense of awareness. We don't need to attend these meetings, I understand the purpose of keeping them small, but we need to be involved. And maybe that's a, a monthly or an every other monthly executive session to fill us in, if it, if it's an executive session material. But I will move these motions, I will support these motions, because there is no money involved that is not putting the city at risk. But going forward, I will not, unless I am fully informed, and I want that just clearly, clearly stated. So, again, um, President Taddeo moved that, uh, to extend and sign the letter of intent for 10 Cleveland Avenue for an additional six months. I moved the motion, it was seconded.
Any further comments? Yes, Alderman Heck.
Alderman, uh, Gillum? 10 Cleveland Avenue, refresh my memory, please. What's the, what's the, what is it?
That's Lyndon Lee Fashions.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, Alderwoman Davis made a motion for the city to apply and enroll in the BRELLA program and the municipal liability exemption for 10 Cleveland Avenue. That motion passed 10, or, excuse me, uh, four to zero.
And I so moved that motion.
Second.
And I think the only issue that, with this that I have is, when we talked about, at one point, we're going to know what the cleanup costs will be. And at one point, we need to know, when is that when we say enough? That's the dollar amount we need to be looking at. At what point do we say this is not cost-effective to move forward?
Has this property been sold?
No, not yet.
So, it's still under whatever regio LLC?
Yes. Again, this motion doesn't have the city at risk.
Yes, Alderman Gillum.
Let me just clear a little things up here. They're not purchasing anything. It's just giving us permission to go on the property with the contractors to look at asbestos removal, look at the Brownfield stuff, work with the state, and get the costs together, um, so we understand what we're looking at, uh, because this is a potential piece of property. It could be in the Tiff District if we set the Tiff District up. But we have not drawn the lines yet, so we need to get a couple of projects in place before we can start drawing lines for the district. So, we have to get this information together, so we know what our costs are, know what we have to do to clean the building up, and then... And then what developer would come in once it's cleaned up. That's probably the series of what's going to work. So, but we need the information, and that's what we're approving here, to get that information.
We have a motion. It was seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 10 Cleveland Avenue will remain in committee. Uh, next up, we talked about the Center Street redesign. Mayor Dungus presented on the Center Street redesign project. The scoping study and the underground utility study are complete. The next step is to hire a design firm to create a physical engineering design. Alderman McCann made a motion to give the mayor on behalf of the city permission to issue a request for proposal on the Center Street redesign project for design and pricing for Center Street and Whale Street. The motion passed four to zero.
And I will move that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Center Street redesign will also remain in committee. Uh, last, we discussed the Market Rate RLF program. Melanie Paskovich presented on the Rutland Market Rate Revolving Loan Fund Program. There were some modifications made to the lending program that will make the program less costly, make it simpler to navigate and mitigate risks for Rutland City. Funding will now be awarded for 12-month-long projects as opposed to over 18 months. The plan is to relaunch the process on April 22nd, 2024, for six weeks. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to approve the modifications made to the Rutland Market Rate Revolving Loan Fund Program. Motion passed four to zero.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at 6:16 PM. Next up, we have reports of select committees, and we have myself with the Environmental Sustainability Committee report. So the Environmental Sustainability Committee met Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. The topic was the city building energy survey. Committee members present were myself, Alderman Barber Gallo, Alderman McCann. Others present were Mike Dungus, Mayor Mike Dungus, President Talbot, Alderwoman Davis, Kim Peters, Tyler Dalen, and Dean John Angelotti's. The meeting was called to order at 5:37 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss Johnson Controls' city building energy survey and get an update on the project. Dean from Johnson Controls gave the Environmental Sustainability Committee an update of the Rutland City buildings his team has evaluated and presented a project development agreement. The goal is to update city buildings with LED lighting, improve energy efficiency, and install solar panels to reduce the city's electricity bills. The plan is to have a budget-neutral project and monetize the savings from energy efficiency improvements into a construction fund that will pay for the energy improvements. Johnson Controls will assist the city to maximize federal and state grants and solar rebates to create a plan to pay for efficiency improvements that will not impact the city budget. The goal is to complete over $4 million in energy improvements without impacting the taxpayer. Johnson Controls has been partnering with Rutland Public Schools and has reduced the school's energy costs by half over the last 10 years. For phase one of the project, Dean hopes to help Rutland to phase out oil. This project not only improves energy efficiency in the city, but reduces Rutland's carbon emissions and contributions to climate change. Mayor Dungus stated that he hopes to create a final plan that costs the city less money, or less per month than it currently spends on electricity, thereby reducing the city tax rate. For Johnson Controls to move forward with the final evaluations and create a construction plan and final contract for the city to sign, Johnson Controls requires Rutland City to enter into a project development agreement. This will permit Johnson Controls to move forward with gathering the data and creating a plan that can be memorialized into a final contract. The contract will be presented to the Board of Aldermen in Rutland City in August 2024, and the city will have the choice to either sign the contract or decide not to proceed. It is important to move forward with the preliminary agreement, the project development agreement, to maximize some of the solar savings that will only be available in 2024. Alderman McCann made a motion to recommend the full board authorize the mayor to sign the project development agreement with Johnson Controls, pending attorney review. The motion passed three to zero.
And I'll move that motion.
Second.
It has, the motion has been moved. It has been seconded. A question from Alderman Heck.
And I mean this respectfully. So the meeting was held on February 28th. Why six weeks to get it out?
Am I allowed to respond to that?
You gave the report.
Yeah, okay, sorry, okay. Um, yes, um, this, there was some concern about this company's involvement with another city and whether or not, um, things played out how they thought they were going to. So the mayor made a couple of phone calls, understood more of the situation, and then felt comfortable to enter into the agreement. Again, it's a non-binding agreement. This is basically kind of like the letter of intent, giving a little bit more control to Johnson Controls so they can gather the data to let us know what our options are. So it's a non-binding contract. It's just giving them permission to basically do some energy audits for us. Part of this is to basically facilitate more grant funding under the MERC program, the Municipal Energy Resiliency Fund. So it's a way to just try to get more funding into the city. Any further questions? Debate, comments? We have a motion. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Board of Control Commissioners. There is none. Next, we have Board of Cannabis Commissioners. There is none. Do we have any unfinished business? Yes, Alderwoman Davis.
Question again with the cannabis to have we heard from, situline page, whether or not, what local control means? Have we gotten any decisions on, on that?
Right, so the short answer is there's nothing really conclusive. I'm still hoping to hear back from the State Board to get clarification on that. But if I'm not able to reach out to them soon, I will put what I have in a memo to the board just so we have what information does exist out there. Part of the reason there's been a bit of a delay is just because there isn't much case law or anything surrounding the cannabis laws because it is still so new. So it's been trying to track down a lot of information that isn't well-defined yet. But that is a work in progress.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have miscellaneous, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Yes, Alderman Barber Gallo.
At this time, I would like to congratulate Chief Kilkellon and the Rutland City Police Department. On May 25th of this year, down at the Spartan Arena, the Police Department and Chief Kilkellon are being honored by the Dismas House. Uh, this is their annual dinner auction, and the Rutland City Police Department is being awarded the Jack Hickey Award, which is a service award. And if there's anybody in this city that deserves a service award, it's our police department. And I hereby congratulate them.
Good, thank you. That's nice to know.
Thank you.
Other new business motions? Yes, Alderman Heck.
I just had a question. I was wondering if, um, maybe Commissioner, I don't want to use his first name, Bob, Protabansky, could just report out. It's my understanding that Pete Kelly will be retiring. For you, those of you that don't know Peter Kelly, he's a engineering tech. He's been with the city for over 40 years. And his service is invaluable. It just cannot be replaced by an appointed, you know, person. I'm sure that whatever's going to be done or necessarily needs to be done will be looked at and stuff. But I had a chance to work with Peter for 14 years. He is a consummate professional. And I'm just wondering what the city is doing about that because again, that's a position that is just, you know, you can't fill it overnight as far as that goes. So I'm just wondering if Bob might be able to let us know if, what's happening with that, and it would be great.
Yep. I'll move to adjourn.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have something further?
No, no, I just wondered if he wanted to go to committee and have a report.
I was just, I don't know if it needs to go to committee. I'm not looking for anything that in-depth. I'm just asking if he could let, let us know, you know, what, what's going on with the process or what, what they are going to be doing about getting that position filled.
So if I may?
Yes.
I believe it was addressed via the budget process. It was in addition, it was one of the additional positions that was added in the budget process. I don't know who has filled it or if it's been filled. But the money was set aside to, to get that position filled so someone would be learning behind Pete before he retires.
Further questions, comments, concerns, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.